Good morning. It is Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024, and I'll call to order the meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Please stand if you're able to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we have a motion to adopt today's agenda, I just want to make note that on item number 10 on the consent agenda that deals with licensing at Twin Acres, the date is incorrect on the agenda. It should be July 24th, 2024 to July 28th, 2024. So I take a motion to adopt the agenda with those changes for item number 10 on the consent agenda.
I think it's item nine. I guess I've got the wrong agenda.
No, it's item 10.
Oh, item 10 on consent. I'm sorry. I thought you meant item 10 on the agenda. I would move approval of the agenda with the change on item 10 of consent.
Second. They moved in seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Now we'll move on to public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If anyone would like to make public comment and you're in the public meeting room, you can come forward to the front table here. Or if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand and we'll call on you. And not seeing anyone wanting to make public comment, we'll close public comment. We'll move on to agency reports. Do we have someone from the Community Academy here? Oh. Mike?
Yep.
Yeah, come on right up here.
I didn't have a USB. My computer had a USB C and I had a USB, so it didn't work out. I had a little presentation. So I'm Executive Director of the Community Academy. My name is Mike Todd. And we received some asset funding from the county in fiscal year 24, and so I'm here to present our annual report. Just to give you a little overview. So the Community Academy was started in 2018 by a bunch of Ames teachers, trying to do more for education, more for the community, more for all these things that we were already doing in our classrooms, but felt like we needed to do more. So yeah, I also teach at Ames High School, so I'm a biology teacher there. So night, day, weekends, whatever it is to change the community and do it with kids. You know, a lot of times kids are kind of, hey, well, you can do the work. We'll figure out what to do. We really feel like there's power in saying, hey, let's involve kids as partners in their education. And we've seen some transformative effects. So we encourage all kids to be part of our programming. We encourage, you know, we have kids with autism, kids, you know, with disabilities, kids with anxiety, kids with every kind of kid can become and be part of a community because that's what a community is. And so we have an after-school program where we engage kids throughout the year in this process, determining what the community's needs are, and then eventually engaging them and determining what we want to do and working with partners, big on collaboration. So that's what we do. Oh, you didn't have it? Okay. Okay. So I think you saw our annual report. You know, the amount of funding that we get from the county ends up being, I think this is our first year in asset, was fiscal year 24, and we are also a fiscal year 25 recipient of some funding. So that funding goes in fiscal year 24 went to all Story County residents outside of Ames. So that was, we really do try to earmark, you know, those things for certain residents. And all of those kids were free and reduced lunch that we access that programming. As we get each year, we are trying to access more and more kids from outside of Ames to come to the programming. You know, we've tried a variety of things. We reach out to schools. We have a sliding scale, right? So we also believe that not all kids, I have a slide in my presentation, right? Forty-four percent of families that are low income cannot have their kids in any type of summer thing because of cost. And so many families cannot send their kids to anything in the summer. We think that's a travesty. So we really do try to fundraise to, you know, access funding for those families so that their kids can have these community-building, you know, person-building experiences, building relationships with everybody in our community and engaging in these kinds of projects. So yeah, so our goal is to access more funding. And last year, we had nine weeks of summer programming. So we're a summer program with assets. So we're kind of weird. We have an after-school part, but summer is by far the majority of our programming. And so our report was based on summer of 2023, even though for us it falls in two fiscal years. Sometimes the asset summer programs get to, we get to claim all that data as one chunk. You know, the June programs are part of last fiscal year, and the July and August are part of the next. Well, we kind of slide it a little bit. So our annual report was for summer of 2023, and then this school year's after-school program is what it was. So you can get a sense that we have, we had 331 weeks, I think, of kid weeks of program that we offered. That's how many kids were involved. Fifty-three percent of those were free and reduced lunch. You know, that's a giant chunk of kids in a program that, you know, we really, I mean, this is sliding scale. Families paid $5 a week for all-day programming at the lowest level, and we feel strongly about that. We do not want to have a program that doesn't include everybody from the community. It's not first come, first served, because first come, first served does not serve all kids. It just doesn't. And so that was, and last year, we had some one-time funding from the year before that we used. And that's, we were really looking at how, what is our capacity for accessing low-income families and getting them into our programs and serving them with the types of, you know, supports that we were offering? And it was overwhelming. We had to eventually cut it off and say, we can't accept anymore. So we knew our, we knew our capacity was large for serving these families. So we asked this fiscal, you know, for this current fiscal year we're in from asset, we asked based on that number and said, hey, you know, that one-time funding is gone now that we got from a foundation. But if we want to still serve those kids in our community, this is the number. And we will serve only low-income kids with that amount of asset funding. We didn't, we didn't get that much, but we did serve whatever asset provides us. We will serve kids with that money. So the number's down a little bit this year, you know, the current fiscal year, because, you know, we don't have that funding to fund those families, but we're keeping track of how many ask. And there's a lot of families out there that are, again, sending their kids to nothing in the summer, and it breaks our hearts, but we are working to access more. So yeah. And we do think that kids, all kids, especially kids that need the most, need programming throughout the year. And that's why we have an after-school program. We had three after-school programs in the last fiscal year in addition to the nine weeks of summer programming. We had a program called Nature in Place. We grew 11,000 native plants with the city of Ames as one of our partners, where a lot of them go. We leased ISU Greenhouse space. The kids are working with the city to figure out, where are we going to plant these? Where are we going to get these at? And they've been a great partner of ours for years on that project. And, you know, we did a lot of work with those plants and transformed the environment during our session one of our summer. So this year. So again, it all kind of builds together. Big part of our work is long-term community projects with collaborators. You know, we're working with a variety of entities. We also had a Youth Voices and Community Radio pilot that we did with KHY Radio in Ames. And our goal there is, it was to engage it in the summer. That's what we've been doing this summer. So we've had kids that have been developing radio programs based on things that have interested them. The first session, I think, focused on the native plant project this year, so they interviewed a bunch of people every time we went. And then they learned to, you know, stitch that together and create a radio program that was on the radio, teaching people about our work in the community and the partners that were involved. And our second session that we just got done with, it was Food in Place, and we were looking at food insecurity in Story County. And we visited a variety of nonprofit partners and actually did work with them to get, you know, that food to people who need it. And they're doing a radio program that they're currently developing. We're in session three. I just came from there. We're still going on for a couple more weeks. And, you know, it's kids, kids is part of the community now. You don't have to wait. You don't have to wait till you're an adult. You can be part of a community now and do real meaningful things. And that's really cool. So questions do you have for me? Sorry, I didn't have my presentation.
I have a couple comments and then a question.
Yep.
And the first comment is the prairie plants that you started are very good. They all lived.
Awesome. You bought some. Great.
You had a great selection, so you did a good job with that. Also, I zoomed in on the hunger collaboration the other day. And Michael Zier had a couple of your kids, and they were talking about people they had interviewed about hunger. And I really appreciate the fact that you're getting the kids out into the community to learn about the issues. You're educating future voters.
There we go. It's one of the reasons we call it the Community Academy, right? This is how we develop community citizens. This is their, you know, the way they become great citizens.
You're doing a great, you're doing a great job. My question is on your notes on your, on your report. It says you contacted some schools that, by distributing materials, and they put them in their virtual backpacks, their digital backpacks, but they didn't want to send them directly to families. Did you get any, did you get many kids from non-Ames schools or any at all?
Not really. We got a few. I think about, I think it's at 25% of our asset funding that we got from the county went to county residents that are outside of Ames.
Okay.
But we would like that to happen, and we believe that there's some sort of disconnect, I think, between a sort of a nonprofit maybe going to a school and they feel sort of weird about, I mean, your kid can go to all-day programming. This year it was $25 a week, but that's, I mean, that's pretty significantly low for programming.
Did they give you any reasons why they didn't, were they just overloading families with information? Or did they not understand the program?
I think in Ames, it was, because Michael Zier did some of that work outside of Ames, but in Ames, I know it was, oh, the board policy says or something, but it really didn't. And it was an interpretation locally. And I think that somebody, maybe from the county, saying, hey, we have these programs that we fund through asset that we want county kids in. Man, let's get them in there. And I think that would go a long way, probably.
Yeah, I believe it is policy of school districts not to send information, visible information home anymore. Anyone who wants to reach families, the information goes into their digital backpack.
Okay.
And then things aren't getting lost and nobody's getting priority, all of that. So.
I also know there's a lot of materials that go in those digital backpacks, too.
So some of it is, it's hard to sort through.
Yeah, I bet it is.
It's really hard.
Maybe there's some other things that we can do to promote it.
That would be great. We know the digital backpacks. There are some families, sometimes families with very few resources that don't even access those.
Well, you know, yeah, and not everybody has good internet.
That's right.
For example. And yeah, so we're kind of, some people are kind of stuck between this. We no longer do stuff on paper. You've got to do everything online. However, we don't have the resources.
Have you checked with Story County Decat for some of their grant funding? That might be in having to look at for some additional.
Okay.
Funding.
Awesome. I do have a question about how you're addressing transportation for after-school and then.
Yeah, so we lease a bus for the summer program. And just to give you an idea, so just to lease a bus and a driver, or, you know, not one of our teachers as the driver, but when we don't have a teacher that's a driver and our insurance and fuel, it's about $8,000. So it's a significant chunk, but we believe, and it was in my report, we believe that getting them out into the community and not just in a building all day or on the site is really important. We're actually at Ames High School this summer, and it's been amazing. I mean, I teach there. It's the facility near a river and the garden and Ames High Prairie and all kinds of things, but also pretty centrally located to get out to a variety of things at McFarland Park. And Peterson Pitts, we go once a week, you know, and canoe with the Skunk River paddlers and all kinds of things. But getting kids out in the community is huge. It's just very expensive, but.
Do you use that bus to pick kids up from communities to bring them to the programming?
We do not. No, they have to, they would have to drop off at the high school. But again, with additional funding, we have a list of ideas we'd love to implement, you know, before and after school, potentially a little bit of, a little bit of thing, a little bit of space. But it's pretty significant. And we're a nonprofit, right? So it's a zero-sum game, you know?
Right.
So it's, yeah, it's tricky.
I was curious how you had addressed it.
Yeah.
Because I know it is a challenge.
I was thinking about that, too. When you, if you're looking at getting kids from outside of Ames, particularly a ways away, transportation, just the gas money to get your kid back and forth every day, if you happen to even be able to do that, it's a real problem.
And after-school. I mean, I think it's a challenge that, yeah, it would be great to find a solution for, for so many different.
And I know we participated with the Transportation Collaborative, too. There's a Hunger Collaborative and Transportation Collaborative. I think we've been participating with some of those, and I think a lot of it's geared towards adults, right, in accessing services. But I think having things like this for families, for their children, I think is always.
Have you ever talked to RSVP?
Who's RSVP?
Retired Seniors Volunteer Program in Story. They do transportation for seniors for medical things. I don't know if they do any transportation for anything else.
I don't know that they do. I think they do more basic. HERDA might also be another one.
We did contact HERDA. It was going to be round-trip, $5 per kid for us to transport. And it was limited number of kids in different places. So I think, yeah. Some of that just, I think, funding goes into it, but it has very limited scope, maybe. And our program is typically not part of that scope.
Well, it's really fantastic programming that you're doing and an amazing impact on the kids and community. So.
Yeah, we hear a lot of stories.
Make sure that you're keeping that percentage of low income so they have the opportunity to partake in this as well.
Thanks.
Thank you to everybody who's involved.
Yeah, great staff. And we, I mean, we hire teachers. So that's who, that's who our, that's who works for us is teachers. So it's, you know, the other really nice part of this is that, you know, these teachers get to be part of finding out what is in our communities as resources, projects to collaborate on, nature spaces to get kids out in. And we hear our teachers saying, I didn't even know these things existed. And then when they go back to their classrooms, right, they take that back. And that's altering kids' lives that aren't even in our program. And I think that's why this is, this is really a, we say $1 coming in funds youth development, environmental change in our communities, community building and partnerships between all kinds of nonprofits to leverage resources and professional development for teachers like this. This is some of the best money spent. This isn't, and we're, you know, very thrifty. We only have part-time staff as our, even our executive director, me and our development director. So again, we are very efficient with the money that comes into our program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to consideration of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the July 16th, 2024 minutes?
I would move approval.
Second.
Been moved in seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Next, we'll move on to consideration of personnel actions.
I would move approval of personnel actions as presented.
Second.
They moved in seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Consent agenda.
I would move approval of consent agenda.
Second.
They moved in seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Several pages of consent. We have no public hearing items. Next, we have additional items. We have discussion and consideration of Resolution 25-20, 25-06, establishing a county compensation board. I put this on the agenda for us to discuss. If you recall, the legislation last year basically disbanded all county compensation boards. If we want to continue having one, we need to establish or re-establish a county compensation board. So we have a resolution on here that basically says that we're establishing one and that will follow the requirements within the code section. And if there's no discussion, I'll take a motion.
I move approval of Resolution 25.06.
Second.
They moved in seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Okay, moving on. Next, we have discussion and consideration of a letter for support for a grant application to the Iowa Workforce and Development for the Expansion of the Workforce Retraining Program administered by the Ames Regional Economic Alliance in Tibun County. I was asked by the Ames Regional Economic Alliance, it has really taken a while to get used to saying that one. They are applying for a grant for sustainability and to look at expanding into Boone County. And the letter does not tie us to any money at all. It's just basically recognizing the positive impact that it's had in Story County, and they hope to help start something in Boone County as well. And I wasn't sure if we needed a letter or not, but I just thought I'd put it on the agenda or as support for the three of us or not, but I wanted to put it on the agenda. I just felt that's more transparent, too.
Well, I was very glad to see this because when we put together our workforce retraining program, we just went over to Boone County and talked to them about like they want to, you know, partake in it. And because there were some retraining programs that really did, could fit and help them. At that point, they didn't feel like they had the money to do that, so I'm glad they've got an option there.
Yeah.
To get the funds. We started ours with ARPA monies.
Right.
In the early in that, and yeah, so I'm glad to see this. I think it'd be good to have Boone County involved.
I agree. Yeah, I was glad to see it, too. Great. Is there a motion? I would move approval.
Second.
They moved in seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. It is approved. Next, we have discussion and consideration of Resolution 25-07, Agricultural Platt Kimberly Farms subdivision, Platt 2. Good morning, Leanne.
Good morning. Thank you, Bryce. This application before you is a subdivision plat that is being processed as an agricultural subdivision.
Can you pull your mic just a little closer?
Thank you. Hold on, I'm too short for the height of the microphones. The applicant is Patrick Shellquist with McClure Engineering of Ankeny. There are three property owners for the property under consideration for this agricultural subdivision plat. Those are listed on the screen. It is located in Collins Township, just south of the city of Collins, the intersection of Highway 65 and, or highway, or two, US Highway 65 and 210. Listed on the screen are the districts that are involved, that are part of this agricultural subdivision plat. If it does look familiar, last November, you took action on a preliminary subdivision plat. In essence, this is primarily the same with one change I'll get to shortly. And I'll tell you why we're coming back through agricultural subdivision plat. It does have to do with the city of Collins, and they have included this piece of property of Landis in their TIF district. And so pardon me, that's a teaser of a little bit to come on why we're seeing this again. Bryce, can you go to the next slide? Again, this is the location on Highway 210 and US Highway 65. It's hard to say. I want to say Interstate Highway 65, and it's not. It's on the southwest corner, and you can see the Landis property on the right side with the elevator and the ancillary equipment. Next slide, please. This proposed subdivision is coming back because, again, when you saw it in November of 2023, we were not aware that this was part of, the planning and development staff was not aware that this was within the Sedia Collins TIF district. As such, they cannot change the configuration of what was then, or is now parcel C. It'll now be, have a new lot designation. They wanted to add land to that so that they could put the turnaround in and part of the hydro ammonia expansion that had already been permitted through you as a commercial zoning permit. Again, because it is part of the city's TIF district, it could not expand in size. Through some discussions with our department and others, we came to the conclusion that it could go through as an agricultural subdivision plat and meets the requirements of that. It's zone A1 and A2 and meets all the other requirements I'll get to shortly. So this is the proposed subdivision. If you all go to the next slide, please. There are four lots, so this is the northern half of the subdivision. You'll see the parcel C, which will have a new lot assigned to it, a lot number assigned to it. You can see the buildings are associated with Landis on the property with the bins, with the circles in the upper right-hand corner. Again, there are three property owners. So all three property owners that were part of the original Kimberly Farms had to be included in the subdivision. So this is why it's more than just that Landis property and the property be added. You can see the, I didn't bring the pointer, the rectangular lot that is just south of the larger circle in the upper right-hand corner. That will also go into ownership of Landis, and that is where the turnaround will go for then hydro ammonia. And then the remaining two lots are, will remain in agricultural use. Go to the next. This is the southern portion. You see the boundary of the floodplain as well. There is zone A, so general floodplain on the property. One thing you do see are the contour lines, and there's a staff recommendation that prior to recording the document, those contour lines be removed. A document cannot be recorded with those lines. So I'll get to that standard or recommendation and conditions for approval at the conclusion. Go to the next one. Again, I've kind of already said this, but properties are zoned A1 and A2. Current uses do match those two zoning designations. I mentioned that we came to a conclusion that they could come through an agricultural subdivision plat. There is a limitation, the agricultural subdivision plat, that no new development lots are being met or are being developed with a proposed subdivision. That is true in this case. And I did include the definition of development law in the staff report. It's on the screen. But in summary, it means a law on an approved plat designed and intended to be utilized for principal permitted use or approved conditional use in the applicable zone district. So they are not creating that type of a lot. Let me know if you have any questions on that as well. If you all go to the next slide. So this is something you've seen several times. These are the standards for approval that are applicable for agricultural subdivisions, subdivision plats. All must be met in order for the board to approve the subdivision plat. This is true in all cases. A through E are satisfied. The next one. We did send property notice letters on July 17th. Today, we have not had any comments. And then we did send this through inter-agency review. The first three, numbers 1, 2, 3, there are comments from planning and development staff that we have shared with the applicant as well as including the staff report recommendation for you as standards or conditions of approval. One being a statement from the county auditor approving the name or title of subdivision plat be submitted. Since I've drafted staff report, I've now learned the process a little bit better. We'll get that once you take action today. Also, a revised plat with the contour lines be removed, with the removed contour lines be submitted for review, and then we'll take that for recording. And then the property taxes need to be brought up to, paid. And so that be submitted along with a signed treasure certificate. The county auditor's office did also note that the cover sheet for the proposed subdivision did have an error that needed to be corrected. So again, that's part of the conditions of approval. Next slide. So the points to consider, all property owners involved in the planning process have signed a consent to plat that they are agreed to the platting that's before you. And those are submitted as part of the planning documents that were submitted to planning and development. Again, no new or additional development lots are being created, the key being development lot in that case. The subdivision meets all requirements and standards for agricultural subdivision with the revisions as noted and then recommended conditions of approval. Number four, the use of the proposed lots will remain in agriculture. Number four, the use of the proposed lots will remain in agriculture, agricultural or agri agribusiness. Number five, the laws for not to be used for development unless in conformance with our land development regulations. And the last point in the analysis is additional divisions, if they were to come forward, are not permitted unless the entire subdivision is brought forward for platting purposes. So one lot cannot just come back and divide. It had to be all of them like we are right now. So the conditions for approval that staff recommends are on the screen and simply it's just this prior to recordation that all the comments that planning and development identified are satisfied. So we would review that internally and then, um, once we get to a place that we're, we feel all these set conditions are satisfied, we'll take it for recording. And then your alternatives are on the screen in front of you and staff does recommend alternative number two that you approve the resolution with conditions of approval. Are there any questions?
Yeah. Um, so I'm a little confused because there's a lot happening on the maps and just out of my own curiosity, are we talking about lot five? Are we talking about lot one on the on the map, on the first map with none of the contouring and?
Okay.
And all of that.
Go to the slide that has this one. That one. And I should have zoomed in more. Um, so there are actually five lots that are part of the subdivision. Lot five, which is that rectangular piece um, that you're asking about. That is where the turnaround will be added. And originally, when you took action last November, that was parcel C was being enlarged to include that. Now it has to be a standalone on its own parcel.
Okay.
But all five lots are part of the subdivision.
Okay, okay. That's where I was getting a little lost. Thank you.
No, I it's a good question. It took us some time to really grasp all of it as well.
I don't have any other.
That was my only question.
Is there a motion?
Um, I would move that we approve resolution 2507, the Agriculture Platt Kimberly Farms subdivision plat two with conditions is put forth in S U B 24 dash five zeros seven.
Second. Then moved in seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Thank you, Leanne.
Thank you.
Uh, next, we have departmental reports with animal control.
Good morning.
Good morning, Anna.
So in the second quarter of 2024, we started April with 57 animals in our care and we saw an increase in animal intakes and a decrease in adoptions. It continues a trend from previous years. So, you know, don't be alarmed. Um, among the 128 animals taken in, 57 were kittens with most spending time in foster care. We currently have 24 cats and kittens, along with one dog in foster care. And Animal Control handled various calls, mainly bite cases and stray pickups. In April and May, we finished up our first poorly drawn pets fundraiser. Staff and volunteers had a lot of fun with this and we received great feedback from the participants. Additionally, we were invited to present at the Ames Lions Club in May and the Nevada Kiwanis in June, raising awareness about our shelter and the importance of animal welfare. We also launched a Storytime for Children ages four through 10, touching on animal welfare and responsible pet ownership as well as fun projects like making tie blankets and adoption to go bags. And lastly, on June 8th, the Chase and Tales Group held their 12th annual memorial ride fundraiser, raising $5,280 for our shelter. We are extremely thankful for their support, which will greatly assist in caring for and finding homes for our animals. Any questions?
No, just a lot of really fun stuff that you're you're doing.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I like your Facebook posts that you do to really try to engage the public and to highlight the animals that are up for adoption and then your, what are they? Where are they Wednesday?
Yes.
Yeah, to show how they're thriving in their new home locations. And I love coming over to visit and.
And I love the idea of the poorly drawn pets.
Yeah.
Contest. Way to be inclusive. I don't have any questions.
Nope.
I have no questions. Just thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Anna. Uh, no other reports, any upcoming agenda items?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, now it's time for public comment. Number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take action on the comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. If anyone would like to make public comment, if you're in the public meeting room, please come forward. Or if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand and we'll call on you on Zoom. And I'm not seeing anyone rush to the table, so we'll close public comment. Number two, liaison assignments, committee updates and announcements. Supervisor Merkin, you want to start?
Sure.
Um, several meetings coming up this week, this afternoon, one was the Sustainable Iowa Land Trust, talking about a project they have called Circle Our Cities with the goal of getting more local foods closer to larger urban areas around there. I'm forward to that. Tomorrow morning, I have a Zoom call on the leadership boot camp. Want to get an update on that. And we have a headwaters of South Skunk WMA meeting at 10 to noon. Got some appointments in the afternoon. Thursday, it looks like we're going to Roland for Story County Economic Development. And in the afternoon, I've got a webinar with NTIA on the, on whatever's happening with the broadband funding, hoping to, um, hoping to get some good news about that. And, um, another RSVP is having a recognition and volunteer recognition at Raymond Gardens late afternoon. I hope to stop in on that. And I've got a meeting on Friday with somebody from Iowa State to get some more information that might help our WMA work. I see that Saturday is the memorial for Earth Gloss and who died recently. And I think a lot of people will be attending that. He was one of our citizens of the year. And, um, yeah, we miss serve a lot. Uh, that's it for the week.
Busy week for you.
It is.
Supervisor Basil?
Um, I have a meeting out at Conservation this afternoon. I did have a meeting on my calendar for tomorrow that has been rescheduled, so I'll be in the office tomorrow. There's a transportation collaboration Zoom meeting in the afternoon that I'm hoping to pop in on. And then I have a CCJ board meeting tomorrow evening. On Thursday, um, I'll be at the Story County Economic Development Group meeting. And then we have a wellness committee meeting in the afternoon. And then I have a CFR board meeting. This is the week of nighttime meetings. Thursday evening, Friday, I have Central Iowa Juvenile Detention meeting that I expect will take a a good portion of my morning into early afternoon in Eldora. And then Friday afternoon, I have a a personal appointment that I'll be at Friday afternoon. And Monday is the Women in Sports event out in Boone and that should be fantastic. It's on the Chamber, uh, regional, what's the name?
The Ames.
Ames.
Economic.
Regional Economic Alliance website. If you haven't signed up for it yet, it should be a really fun evening. That that's it so far.
Busy week for you too. We're all busy. Um, I have a meeting this afternoon with a constituent tomorrow. I'm in the office. I've got Transportation Collaborative in the afternoon and the NACO Healthy Communities meeting. Thursday be up, oh, actually I have a Herda, uh, board meeting first thing and then I'll be up in Roland for our Story County Economic Development. Uh, CICS meeting was canceled. So I'll be in for a little bit on Thursday afternoon, then leaving because it is the ARX George Niang fundraiser and I'm on the board for that. So we have that Thursday night and then we have the, I'm helping out with the fundraiser on Friday, which is the golf tournament. So I'm hoping for warm weather since I'll be outside starting at 6:00 AM. Uh, Monday morning, I have a meeting in Ames. Then I have a workforce meeting and MICA meeting that evening over in Marshalltown. So busy time for all of us. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. We are adjourned.